Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd. The time is 6:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Cappell City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce work session, which time the public will be invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The time is 6:10 PM. We have adjourned from executive session and are moving into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you. First point is discussion regarding the agenda. There were a couple of questions sent in in advance, and Mike could send out some answers. Any other, any questions or follow-up to those?
Thank you, Mayor. A process-related question. Some of this Q&amp;A, does it benefit to post for public to read, like we put the whole agenda and all the attached memo? Does it help the residents who are interested to see that?
I don't know how to answer that question because if it's covered in the memo, and I think one of the things is we just have to learn more and more about your kind of questions so that we address those questions in the memo. If you want to bring things up and you want us to answer those questions here, that's a way to do it. I don't see, I mean, all our information is public information. To go and post, I don't know how I would go and post it. I'd have to talk to Ashley because it's not attached to the agenda at that point.
That's right, yeah. It has to be done three days in advance.
Well, for the agenda, in terms of what gets posted, but then the addendum, I don't, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe it can be included in the meeting minutes that is published next meeting?
We can talk about that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Any, any other questions, comments on the agenda? All right, moving on. We have a presentation regarding community experiences with Lauren.
Oh, there. I was looking for it. I was looking for it. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lauren Rodriguez, and I'm the manager over at the Corps, and I've had the privilege of acting as the project coordinator for our Community Experiences Master Plan over the last year. Our previous master plan was last updated in 2017, and as you know, much has changed within our department since that time. Over the past year, we've been working closely with our consultant, Dunaway, to update the plan and ensure it reflects our community's current and future needs. We're incredibly proud of the strong community engagement we achieved during the input phase. Our goal was to meet the residents where they were, and we did just that by hosting 17 pop-up events at local businesses, parks, and facilities. We have lots of fun giveaways as well as a float in our Celebrate Cappell Parade down We had a dedicated website that provided different ways for the community to engage, including our first-ever teen-specific survey. As a fun incentive, community members also had the chance to score one of our exclusive limited-edition 7501 shirts.
Yeah, we need more of those.
They're off commodity, but they were limited edition.
You're making a killing on me, so I've been the city for years.
I do love, I thought about wearing it tonight, but I went away from it. And throughout this process, we've worked closely with the Parks and Recreation Board, who reviewed and approved the draft plan during their meeting earlier this month. So joining me this evening is Brad Moulton from Dunaway, who will walk you through the highlights of our plan.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time to look through the plan. I know you all got a copy of it, and we'll be able to review it in detail. We're going to go through kind of a summary of the process and kind of the highlights within the plan here on the presentation, but then we'd be happy to answer any questions moving forward. So as we move through, really wanted to outline the two-phase process. As you see, the master plan was completed with this final draft being in review stage right now through the park board, and then, of course, with the council here. Within the Phase One, we worked heavily with the Community Experience Department on the data collection and base mapping. That's really an inventory of the entire system is collected. So we worked with GIS, we worked with photography, site visits to each park, and really get a comprehensive point-of-time documentation of the entire system. So one of these requirements is required within TPWD, Texas Parks and Wildlife's grant program, but also as we start to apply for accreditation and different recommendations, recognitions within the park industry. So having a good inventory and facility analysis is very important with...
Sorry. Approximately, when did Phase One start and conclude?
We started early last year, I guess, was that 2024? And that concluded kind of in that spring, late summer phase. So after really getting a point in time of, you know, what we have, we start to, you know, engage, looking at what, who is this serving? So in terms of the population and demographics analysis, another recommendation from, you know, grant-funded applications, but also within any of the other recommendations or recognitions within the park industry. So we want to understand what the current population is, what the demographics are, and who that is, who this park system is serving. We also look at standards throughout the system and how it compares to other communities of like size. And then, of course, as Lauren mentioned, the public input and needs assessment, going to the public where they are, referencing what the system has, creating awareness for the system, but then also seeing what is desired in terms of updates to the system. So through the rest of Phase Two, we start taking that data and working with, with the department, with the information gathered. We worked with several other individuals, stakeholders with the priority rankings with the park board. Then we created an action plan, which actually shows where specific capital projects could be located within the system. We worked then with a draft master plan through park board, reviewing that a few times, and then now with this final draft master plan that you have to review for the next meeting. So we will go through a few slides here that kind of highlight those within the plan. You'll see kind of how to use the plan within the table of contents here on the right, and then as it moves through each of the sections of the plan, we'll highlight on the inventory. Each park has a location, size, classification. That means kind of a regional park, a neighborhood park, or if it's a special-use park. We also have up-to-date photography, and then, of course, the amenities within each park listed. In terms of population and demographics, again, this can be information that is pulled from the census, as well as North Texas Council of Governments in terms of those projections moving forward. But again, it gives us a good baseline of studying the standards of who this park system is, is serving. Standard analysis is also in detail of some recommendations from the National Parks and Rec Association, but that's just kind of a starting point. We also look at, you know, a 10-minute walk analysis and where, where each park is located within the city itself. We use different software such as GIS to identify, you know, some opportunities or constraints of park location. And so within the report, you'll see an analysis of that park access radius, you know, where other providers, such as private providers, HOAs, or public entities, or private entities that also have a recreation component as well. What this also does is help us identify coverage gaps and where, where would, you know, a new park be recommended. We also did a baseline analysis against other agencies of either like size or trajectory such as, you know, looking at gold medal finalists and winners. So we actually looked at a few different national entities such as Hoffman and Carrington Park, but we were basically taking a benchmarking analysis to see where the, the Cappell system matches up with other like communities. So we look at that as it relates to system inventory elements, as well as staffing, operating and capital expense, as well as recreation programming. Within the report, you'll see multiple charts like this one that summarize those results as well. As Lauren mentioned, the, the needs assessment was, was really well-received. We really, it makes our job easier when we receive lots of input, and so by being able to engage with the public in multiple realms, not just a public survey, or not just a, you know, a public meeting or an open house, but these different pop-up events, and the amount of engagement was great. So the element that, that helps do is round out those priorities. So we'll show you the summary of, of the priorities that came through the plan, not just in programming, but also physical elements within the capital projects recommendations. So this is a quick summary of, you know, most important program needs or areas of improvement over the next five to 10 years, multiple respondents within, and, and resources within the master plan that show each of these types of, these, these types of survey questions. But this one did come out with more fitness and wellness health programs, more senior programs, and more adult programs were some of the higher-ranked priorities within this response. Oops, that is moving. Let me go back a couple of slides. Just to get a captured analysis of those respondents, we wanted to show this and kind of, you know, interesting to see if we captured, you know, the, the true essence of, of the community. And so within the respondent's age demographic, you know, there's, you can see that 35 to 44 range, and then the 45 to 54, you know, was, was pretty relevant to the, to the community today, as well as the race and ethnicity breakdown as well. So just another snapshot of some of the results in, in more detail within the master plan. Recreation program analysis. So we also worked with a subconsultant of ours that we partner with on, on many of these projects that is an expert in the industry of programming, and that means, you know, what type of use we have in terms of, you know, adult programs, kid programs, youth programs. So there's an extensive programming strategy analysis within the master plan. You'll see more detail within the appendix and as well as additional information provided to the, to the department. But each one of these kind of includes many, many business plans and how cost recovery can be incorporated within this programming strategy. So as it relates to priority rankings, as we work with park board and staff and, and the survey results, you know, all of these elements came up as priorities within the master plan. To break them into kind of workable chunks, you know, we kind of worked with a high, medium, low. That's not to mean that a low priority is not still a priority, but we want to look at each of these as, as opportunities within the system. As we mentioned, in, in the master plan as well, there's a map for each of these high, medium, low priorities, and then each park that relates to an opportunity where more seating and shade in parks, more pickleball courts, you know, additional trails in parks is located on a specific map. So this then helps aid park board and park staff as we're working on the capital budget and capital improvements project recommendations for the next year. This action plan starts to look at budget ranges and looks at even potential funding sources as well. What, what that takes together is obviously the inventory, the service areas, as well as the population and standards as they relate to that analysis within the master plan. Lauren's going to summarize a few of the next steps, and happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. So tonight's presentation was really just informational to provide you with a deeper understanding of the components of our master plan. We are not seeking formal approval at this time. We will be bringing it back at the May 13th meeting for adoption. So Brad and I are available to answer any questions.
I think the mayor pro tem is jumping out of his seat.
We can't afford more shirts, I'm sorry.
I would be interested in to learn a little bit more about the health, wellness, and fitness programming. Do we have any deeper detail from that survey about maybe specifics? And the reason why I ask is, this council has been, recently created a, an ad hoc committee to explore expanding, or, you know, just looking at what we're doing and that. So I wasn't sure if you guys were aware that we were doing that. And then number two, obviously, it seems like a perfect opportunity for us to potentially work together with maybe some feedback from the citizens through the survey.
We did, and all of those questions, we did ask a follow-up question on what specific programming would you like to see? We didn't get a ton of responses, but we definitely got a few. I don't have them with me, but I can pull that report and send it over to you.
That would be incredibly helpful, especially for us that are, that are working on that, but...
So I was, I was, that was one of my questions. So Kevin and Ramesh and Brianna were, are, are working on that, and they actually gave us the preliminary assessment a month ago.
A month ago.
And I'd love for you guys to make sure that you're cross-pollinating and talking with them and letting them know, and you need to take a look at what they've come up with as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to give Tracy a shout-out, too, because Tracy worked really hard on this.
Yeah, and Tracy's the liaison. Jim?
So on the, one, on the citizen survey on the, the high priority, it included maintenance of our facilities. Do you have any insight into what about the way we've been maintaining them that people were unhappy with?
A lot of the responses was more just updating it, so a lot of our facilities are just outdated. So it wasn't necessarily falling apart, it's more just that we need to freshen them up to keep up with the times.
Okay, thank you.
One of the early slides you had was a benchmarking as adjacent areas, and I noticed Grapevine was significantly ahead by population. What was it, is that due to the large amount of land they have around the lake, or what was, what was, what's driving that?
On population?
No, it was, keep going, it was one of the, that one.
Or was it acres?
Acres, and, and then...
Acres of managed land. Yes, that is a large area within and around the lake, whether that is owned by the, by the town or actually just managed by the town, because they could be leases through, through the Corps.
Corps of Engineers. Okay, that's kind of what I suspected. That was a, that's an outlier, so...
Sometimes we will have these outliers, but we keep them into, with that known. I mean, we want to, you know, it, they are managed lands by that department, and so when they're, when some of these departments have an asset like that, we still have other metrics that we can compare against, but it is something to take into consideration for sure.
Thank you. Kevin?
The only other, I guess, kind of question I had was, I saw that the, the demographic breakdowns, could we go to that slide?
That looked to be pretty consistent with the city.
Yeah.
Even the, even the age distribution.
Yeah, so I was gonna, I was looking at the, the race, ethnicity section, and I was, I can't remember what our split is for our, our Asian population. I, I know that we have kind of had some talks about just making sure that we're reaching certain populations in our, in our community, so I, I just wanted to make sure that, or kind of ask a big question about like, did we have, you know, what were the kind of the opportunities to make sure that we were reaching, you know, different populations within our community? And do we have any specifically targeted opportunities to maybe reach our, our Asian citizens?
The, this survey actually had, had two versions. It had an English version and a, it, it was actually translated as well. Was it in Korean? The, just another version. So I think that, that, you know, there was a lot of opportunity for, for other, you know, individuals to, you know, to respond to the survey.
And that was also what, oh, I'm sorry. The pop-ups, the 17 pop-ups that we did, we went to like Gas Coffee to go meet them out in the community. We'd see what events were happening in the parks that day to try to really, wherever they were already engaging in our community, go to them, so we're not having to try to seek them out.
Thank you. The website shows 28% Asian, and I think it's 61% Caucasian, and 8% Hispanic, so it's pretty consistent.
That's awesome. All right, just want to make sure that we're, you know, covering all areas of the community as best we can.
Okay. So what's the, the other, where we're going to go from here?
So the next steps is, once this is formally adopted, this will become our department's guidebook for the next five to 10 years, and it's really going to play a factor in with the Parks and Recreation Board. They work on a project priority list every year, and so they'll use this data to help support create that priority list, and then that will kind of give our staff the goals to what we need to be focusing on each year moving forward.
Any questions? We'll be hearing back from you.
So in the next meeting, we'll be bringing it for formal adoption.
Okay. All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Item C is a Vision 2040 Refresh with Ms. Leach.
We'll be going through this large binder line by line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. And apparently, thank you to our Community Experiences staff for mapping out exactly what I'm going to share with you today, which is our engagement plan. And so many of the components of our engagement plan for our Vision 2040 Refresh will sound very familiar to what you just heard 10 minutes ago. I will be covering with you tonight two key points. So I will cover first just a very brief history of how we have landed to this place in the process around our strategic, the life of our strategic plan, and then I'll cover some of the engagement highlights and timelines, so that everybody will know when things are happening, because we anticipate that everybody in this room, in, in addition to many of our friends and neighbors in our community, will be active participants in the entire process from stem to stern. So our history, we, the current plan that we've been operating under was accepted in 2019, and since that time, we have made significant progress and investment in support of the plan in excess of $75 million. So that's everything from infrastructure to programs to everything over the past five years, there has been significant progress made, and part of what we are going to be doing with this effort is educating the community to provide a little more awareness of how far we have come, because some of those things, they fly under the radar. And so it is an opportunity to share with the community what has been done to support the plan. We knew that we were going to do a five-year check-in, and so in January, this January 2025, we released the RFP, and then in February, the council awarded that RFP to Barry Dunn to help us with the facilitation services with our community. So since February of 2025, we have been working with Barry Dunn to develop the engagement plan that I am about to unfold and unveil to you today. You'll notice that there will be various formats, various time commitments. If you only have 10 minutes, we've got something for you. If you're willing to give us an hour and a half, we have something for you there, too. And then something for diverse audiences. I know that engagement for all components and parts of our community is a very important piece to our engagement, so this plan, we believe, will achieve that. I do want to talk a little bit about the roles. So if you were part of the process to, for our current plan, you are aware that through intent, that there was a separation between council and the process, there was a separation between staff and the process with our community. And that worked great, and it also had some challenges that we are going to learn. We're a learning organization, and so we will do things slightly differently this time. So the council role is, we are going to invite you to be visible throughout the entire process. We will be inviting you to attend a lot of the engagement opportunities that we're going to be, I will be sharing with you tonight, and you will really be a policy resource throughout the process. And so not necessarily to say council wouldn't support that idea if you hear something in a meeting, but to provide some context around, here's, here's the conversation that we would have around that. And so here are the things we would think about, and there are things that maybe we can talk about at this form, right? So it is not to say, no, no, don't go down that road, or yes, we approve this. It's really to provide the context around your policymaking and decision-making. For the staff, we will also be very visible throughout the engagement process, and our role will be to serve as informational resource to this process. Many of the things that were discussed during the formation of the plan, we probably could have provided some professional insight around, okay, here's, here's what this is, or we're already doing a program that's very similar to this, and that's, that's the role that we see ourselves adding to this process this second time around.
Hey, Mayor, can I ask you something?
You may.
Yeah, thank you. So if you all are going to be visible, we're going to be visible. I take it Barry Dunn will actually be doing the, like, conducting the interaction and the facilitating the discussion directly?
They will, for many of the components. We have a couple new components that we hope will help us with engaging with groups that we traditionally have not been able to reach, and those will be self facilitated, so we're trying something new. But yes, we have focus groups, we have community forums, we have stakeholder interviews, all of those will be conducted by Barry Dunn.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, so this is a snapshot, just a visual snapshot of all the activities from an engagement standpoint that are going to be occurring between today and the end of the year. We will be bringing a final report to the council in December, so we will be done in December. But I do want to start on the left side, and we will start with, work our way at the very top and work our way down. So I mentioned that council awarded the RFP in February. We will begin the stakeholder interview process in May, and so that stakeholder process will begin with you all as the council. It will include some of our very, our primary leaders of some of our organizations, so the superintendent of the schools, the president of the chamber, those are the types of individuals that we want to make sure that we're going to have a one-on-one conversation with for the purposes of, of feedback. We're going to then have our community engagement kickoff event, which will coincide with the Celebrate Cappell. So our largest event that we have as a community, we will be out there advertising all of the engagement opportunities that we have that will, we are hoping everybody in our community will participate in. In May-ish, we will, excuse me, concurrent to all of the other activities that Barry Dunn's going to be coordinating for us, we are also working on the resident satisfaction survey, so kind of the annual survey that we do, we have been traditionally doing it every other year. We are working on developing that survey now, and so that survey will take place through the summer as well, and so that effort will be complimentary, so it's not going to be asking the same types of questions that we're going to be asking through our social pinpoint launch, so that's a, a great segue into that next line item. So that social pinpoint, if any, if anybody engaged with the Community Experiences online master plan process, it was also through social pinpoint. And so that will serve kind of as our And so that will serve kind of as our online backbone for letting people know all of the things that are upcoming, when things are happening, where they're happening. They can get on and see, they can provide information. So I've given you a very, very small screenshot here. It is not intended for you to actually read those, but there will be a virtual sticky note wall where if you have an idea about something that we need to be doing, you can put a sticky note on there, and then there's either thumbs up, thumbs down to help kind of either elevate, or it's kind of like a Reddit, right? You can kind of see the engagement and enthusiasm, or lack thereof, around some of the ideas that get put up on that virtual wall. We're also going to have as part of that forums, so online forums, so it can be prompted with questions that we would, we would be posting to the site, hoping to get engagement around certain topics. Also, you could, you'll be able to see, you know, the types of comments that are coming in, whether folks are engaging with that, whether they're in support of this idea. And so all of those, in addition to those two features, we will also have a online survey on the social pinpoint site as well. So that is our, that's kind of the virtual online component to the engagement. The next line item down, so these are some of the additional, smaller, smaller scale engagement opportunities that we have. So the pop-ups that Lauren discussed during the Community Experiences engagement process, that is very similar to what we will also be doing. We have some focus groups that we will be either around certain topics or for certain groups. So for example, HOAs, we might have a focus group for our HOAs, or we might have a focus group around pillars one and two. We're still kind of working through how the format is, but there will be some opportunities for a more targeted conversation about specific things. And then we have a new type of engagement, it's called meeting in a box. And if you think about this as an engagement AED, so if you've ever seen an AED, you open up the box, you don't have to have any medical training to save somebody's life. The instructions are very simple, anybody can follow them and have a successful outcome. This is exactly what meeting in a box is. So if you have, there are many social circles and places where people are gathering in our community that we have no access to, that y'all have no access to, but that are important parts that are having, that are gathering every week. So a church group, or a wine club, or a book club, or scout troops, right? All of these different groups. They can take this meeting in a box and conduct their own engagement session right there. You all can be the leads for meeting in a box for the groups that you all have access to. So it can be very organic, and it's with people that they're already comfortable with. So you can kind of have a very organic, honest, candid conversation. Everything that you need is in the box. So you don't have to come up with your own questions, you don't have to figure out what kind of form to fill out, you don't have, I mean, it literally will say, welcome and greet the audience, right? It literally will have very specific instructions so that you can have a successful engagement wherever you are. So we're trying that. It is new. We have never, to my knowledge, I'm not sure we've ever done that. We're going to see how it goes. And at, towards the tail end of our engagement process, we will have two community forums in the fall, and that will take a lot, it'll aggregate a lot of the information that we have collected up to that point, and then get a reaction from the community. Those are intended to be larger scale events that, at some point, we've got to start getting a reaction and, from the community of all of the things that have been collected, and that's our opportunity at the community forums, is to see, all right, does this represent what, all of the feedback that we've gotten? Everything leading up to that point kind of builds on itself, so all of those engagement opportunities, none of them stand alone, they're all contributing to the whole. We will be bringing a draft report to the council in November, and then we will incorporate any changes that you would like to see and be back for approval in December. So in summary, we will have over forty public engagement opportunities, very much like we did for the initial development of the plan. They'll be at various times of the day, they'll be on various days of the week, various, accommodating various time commitments. So we hope to be able to have some opportunity for everybody to plug into this process, to provide us with some feedback. Those opportunities will be available May through October.
Remesh?
And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tracy. Fantastic presentation. Loved it. If you can go back to the last, the previous study, this one. I, I love that you have a measure of forty public engagement. Is there an internal measure of, we would like to reach five percent of the population or X percent of the subgroup Y? Do you have any, even more granular measures like that?
I'm a very competitive person, so I saw the numbers that Lauren presented for the Community Experiences engagement. I would like for us, honestly, the measure of success would be, those are really great numbers that she presented to y'all tonight in terms of how much engagement happened to present, to develop that plan. We would be tickle pink if we had the equivalent level of engagement.
Davis first. Oh, you go ahead, again.
Thank you, sir. Did we have similar engagement numbers in the original 2040? It was over a thousand?
Twelve hundred.
It was twelve hundred. Okay, so look, we've already been there, just saying. So I wanted to just put that out there in the world. Number two, because I was a part of that group, we did have that, oh geez, it's, what was I a part of? The executive committee. Are we doing anything? It's been a long day. Is there any sort of like executive committee type of piece of this, or are we just, since council is going to be a little bit more involved, that's the angle we're going, and I see you nodding, so I'm just going to say thank you for the information.
Unless it's the desire of council to appoint one, you all will be serving kind of as our barometer for whether, what is presented to you represents what you heard.
So I know throughout, like, all the different presentations we've received from y'all, you know, you'll tell us where the particular project we're considering, or, you know, whatever it might be, from infrastructure to replacing the equipment at the core, where that fits in within the pillars and that sort of thing with Vision 2040. Is it your thinking then that, presuming that this refresh is, is accepted in December by this council, that then that would be the reference point going forward?
Yes.
Okay. So this is like Vision 2040 2.0?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. If you think about how many new residents we may have that have come to Capel, none of those individuals had an opportunity to provide any feedback. I don't think we're going to have a wholesale flip-flopping of priorities or things that are important, but I do think, I mean, we're, we're a different community than we were in 2019.
The only, the only point that I would offer is that, you know, 2030 was a little bit more concrete, a little bit more direct, 2040 was a little bit more aspirational. Where do you see this coming in between those two kind of metrics? Are you, are we wanting to have, retain an aspirational guideline, or are we looking for a little bit more concrete direction going forward? What, what do you think, Tracy?
We're going to take our cue from what we hear from the community. I actually, I cannot tell you, we don't have a preference. Maybe I'll put it that way. From a staff perspective, we don't have a preference. We will implement to the best of our ability the plan that the community shares with us.
And you have been, I mean, like I said, everything that we've done, you, you know, you've let us know how it ties into what the community's already spoken to with respect to priorities and wants and wishes and all like that. So, okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
So just a little, I don't know if you realize it, but over half of the council was not present when the 2040 plan was done.
I, I was not.
Nor was he, nor was he.
I mean, I was here, but I wasn't.
No, you, but you weren't here on the council.
I wasn't responsible.
So. So I think it's good, you know, that we do at least take a look at it and.
No, I think it's a great idea.
And I gotta, I gotta, I appreciate, I know that, I don't know about you guys, but I felt a little bit left out of the 2040 plan because we really were remote when the 2040 plan was done. We were, we were not actively engaged even as a, as a observer, so I like, I like this.
What I remember is that it was the executive committee that was present for everything, and then we actually gave a report to the council, I think it was over at the library.
Yeah.
And we said, this is what we found from the community, and, and gave a whole report. So council really was removed from that. And I understand that at that time, that was very intentional.
It was.
So, yeah, I, I just, you know, the, I like the idea of, of, of the executive committee because I like the idea that there was transparency from another group that was not a part, a part of the council. So people could say like, hey, you know, this isn't the council driving this, you know, this is a citizen-driven, you know, initiative. And I understand that was the original reason, if I, if I remember correctly, why it was done that way. But I also understand some of the, the blind spots, if you will, that that might have created, you know, in that process where council didn't feel quite as connected. That's some of the language that I've heard, you know, kind of, I wonder if there's somewhere in the middle that, where we could have, just kind of thinking out loud. Kind of throwing it out there. I, that was a period. Maybe a question mark? I don't know.
Something to consider, I think. I, I don't know how that would work, Mark.
Well, I think if we are to, to participate, that we need to be really in the background observers, not giving much input. Maybe if someone asks you a question, that you can, you know, give them some feedback on, you know, policy like you mentioned, but I really don't want to drive this at all.
I tend to agree with you on that, being on that other side of it. It's sitting in the background and just being able to witness, I could definitely see how that would be a benefit for council without sitting there, do this, do this, do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get enough of my input. I want, I want to hear the community input.
Remesh?
Thanks, Mayor. So Tracy, just to understand the timeline, your recommendation will come back in December, but for the next, next fiscal year, we are locking down the budget and priorities in October, or end of September, right? So if, if there's some good things that come out of this recommendation, it can't be worked on till the next fiscal year?
Correct.
And, and council okay with that?
Yeah.
Not sure there's a way around that, just logistically.
Yeah, I think we'll take all that information into the spring retreat, early or late winter, you know, whatever we have. This is an off year, right? There's no elections, so it's a good time to.
So we have, we have, our next one's in, next month, in May, and then we'd have one in January. So January would be the time that we'd be talking about this. And then that would go into the following year. And keep in mind, you know, let's not, we're kind of making it sound like something's broken. There's nothing broken at all. Our, our 2040 is working quite well, this is just a, a modest course, or it's just a checkup. And, you know, there's, if, if there was something, you know, hemorrhaging, then yeah, we could go in and fix it, but I, I really don't think that we're going to, I think you're going to see some tweaks and some, some fine tunes, but I think it's going to be show to be executing quite well. So I heard you make a couple of ahs during her presentation. Was that during, was that while she was describing the, the 2040 process?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Very, very much so. It was, that was a very cool experience, just overall, just being able to be a part of that. And it, I, it just personally helped me connect more with the city than I'd ever connected before, so I blame Tracy for being on this council, for me, like, at this point, so. No, but I, I would say that kind of the, the dialogue that, you know, that, you know, Mark just shared, and, you know, we were kind of talking back and forth, I really liked the idea of having another executive, a different executive committee on that, but I also liked the idea of like us being able to, I don't know, I guess, witness the process or, or, you know, kind of be there. That might be a happy medium of what the previous council was trying to achieve with the transparency and, and being citizen-led, and us still being able to hear the thought process versus that being filtered through, you know, a, a committee. So we could hear it firsthand, but still, you know, let them drive it. I don't know if anybody else around the table has that kind of thought, but I, I really like that.
I mean, yeah, I'd want to be in listening mode.
Yes.
But I'd appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, my personal preference is to be, be there and listen.
And we can help, help the council in those sessions, we can set the expectations around what your role is so that everybody is clear and we don't have any of these weird things where people are just staring at you to provide an answer.
Don't want that. All right. Any other questions for Tracy? Comments?
Looks great.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. The time is six fifty-five, and we're at the end of work session. We will convene in the regular session of the City Council at seven thirty in the council chambers. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So the councilperson's district that that is involved in is Mr. Walker, so y'all can call him. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Capel City Council. The time is 7:30 PM. We just recessed from work session and moving into the regular session of the Capel Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or during the public hearings must sign the register outside the council chambers and list your address. Tonight, we're honored to have Father Kevin Wilbert of St. Anne's Parish here to give our invocation, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, so please remain standing. Father?
Before we begin the prayer, just a word of gratitude for having me here, and certainly in this time of the Easter season, we celebrate the Lord's resurrection. I also appreciate your prayers and comments earlier, the passing of Pope Francis as the time of mourning, but also as the Holy Spirit continues to guide our church and the world. So let us pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we know that you are good and gracious. Lord, we ask that you continue to be present to us now, to show your love, to show your blessing on us and our community. Lord, we ask that you keep us all safe and draw us close to one another in your love. And we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number six on our agenda is a little proclamation designating April 22, 25 as Capel Cowgirls Soccer Day. So if I will have the members of the team and coaches and any assistants and anybody else associated with the team, but please join me down front.
100% we'll be screening. Are they going to take the picture first or proclamation first? I think they'll do proclamation first. Oh, are we doing, are we going, are we going now? Are we doing photos first? This is out of order. No, we're coming in. Jim's got enough water, it's fine.
Hang on, we've got to do this better. Okay, all right, now. So we're very proud to have you all. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in just a moment, but before we do that, whereas the city of Capel takes immense pride in recognizing the outstanding achievements of youth and excellence demonstrated in both academics and athletics by our students, and whereas on April 12, 2025, in Georgetown, Texas, the Capel High School Girls Varsity Soccer Team, proudly known as the Cowgirls, claimed the UIL Class 6A Division 1 Girls Soccer State Championship by defeating Lake Travis High School with an impressive final score of 6 to 2. And whereas, under the exemplary leadership of head coach Craig Abel and assistant coaches Wendy Flaherty and Brandy, Brandy Cantrell, the Cowboys demonstrated, or Cowgirls, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. The Cowgirls demonstrated unwavering teamwork, determination, and sportsmanship throughout the season and in their championship performance, and whereas senior Summer Chin was named Most Valuable Player of the Class 6A Division 1 Tournament, while scoring two goals and contributing one assist in the final match, and whereas Neraldi Capadia and Monica Morales scored two goals each to lead the Cowgirls to victory. And whereas this historic win marks Capel High School Third Girls Soccer State Championship with previous titles earned in 2009 and 2015, making Capel only the eighth school in UIL history to secure three or more state titles in girls soccer. So congratulations. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, and on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Capel, do hereby recognize and commend the High School Girls Varsity Soccer Team for their extraordinary achievement and proclaim April 22, 2025 as Capel Cowgirls Soccer Day. And in witness therefore, I have set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Capel to be affixed as 22nd day of April 2025. So congratulations. Now, we were going to have a big ceremony and have you ladies sign the soccer ball, but I think it's been signed. Has everybody had a chance to sign it? Because I've got a fresh Sharpie here that, so please sign. What we're going to do with this is we're going to place it in our, in our display counter outside. We also have a volleyball that Chiaka Okavu, who won the silver medal at the Olympics, is out there, so y'all are going to be right beside her. So anybody else? All right, so I understand we have a team captain or two here. So I'd like to present you with the proclamation. You're welcome to put it at the, I don't know, the high school counter or the display tray?
Put it in our display case.
There you go. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Can you hold it? Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to say that we finished our season 22, 2, and 3, and the number one state in Texas, so, and number four in the nation. It was a super fun season, and as we say, we never let our external factors dictate our internal motor, and we are so proud and happy to represent the city of Capel, so, yeah.
Well, we are very proud to have you representing us in such a great way. So council, anybody? Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I just want to thank all of you, let you know how proud we are. My oldest played for the Cowgirls in varsity at the high school. Soccer's always been a fabric of this community. It's been a big, very important part of our community for so, so long, and, you know, and the fact that, the way that it's empowered so many young women like yourselves just means the world, I think, and the way that you've honored our community through this distinction. We just, we're very proud of you, we're very thankful for all that you've done, for all your hard work, your discipline, everything that you've shown. To get to this point, it doesn't come easy, and even if you made it look easy, it doesn't come easy, we know that. And I just want to thank all of you and let you know how very proud we are of you.
All right, Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Huge congratulations to Cowgirls, Capel Cowgirls, right? You made us proud, and we are very happy to see you all here today. I also want to congratulate the parents, because you took them around for practices for many, many years to get to this level, right? So we want to congratulate the parents for your hard work as well. And once again, thanks for coming here and accepting the proclamation from the city of Capel. Thank you.
Councilmember Prim Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor. Capel Cowgirls, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Capel Cowgirls, congratulations. Extremely proud of you. And like my colleague said, congratulations to the parents and to the coaches and the school system. Thank you all for making us feel very proud. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies, congratulations. That is one heck of a season. It was so cool to be able to follow along and see how well you guys did. So I am a graduate of Capel High School, and so, you know, we had had a couple state championships under our belt when we were there, but just to see you guys continue that legacy of excellence and success just makes me just particularly excited that you guys are representing our school district, our community, just in such a great way. So again, I want to echo, parents, thank you guys for all you do to pour into, you know, the young people of our community, you know, your babies. You trust the school district and the community with them, and we really appreciate that. So thank, thank you for all you do. And I just want to know, where's the party? Or you guys already have it yet, or? Next Thursday. All right, excellent. Well, again, huge congratulations to you guys. Thank y'all for all you do.
Okay, got a couple more things. We've got a sign here with somebody's face on it. Would you like to explain who this is?
This is Kylie Guerrero. She was our starting center back this year, along my side. So she's like my, my best friend, my twin. But she's at the US National Camp in Georgia right now, so congratulate her for that. That's a big achievement.
So Coach, you can be heading up here in just a second. Come on over. So I wanted to recognize the, you ladies that have been given scholarships to college. So, let's see, raise your hand and tell me where you're going. Veronica?
A little louder.
Okay, and then Paige? Wonderful. And Anna Maria? Yay. And Tatum? Wonderful. And Reagan? Staying close to home. Jordan? And Monica? Wow. And Summer? And where is Gonzaga? There you go. I used to work for a company in, in Washington State, and so half their graduates were from Gonzaga. That's all I heard about. So you'll enjoy it up there. Tatum? Morningside. Oh, wonderful. Did we miss anybody? Oh, and Kansas State. Wonderful. So congratulations to all of you. Coach, do you have a few words to say?
Yeah, I just would, I thank you guys so much for acknowledging these girls, the amount of hours that they put in to improve their craft, to perfect their craft. It's truly inspirational and super awesome to see, for me, as somebody who lives outside of Capel but gets to work for this district, it's just really cool to see the way the communities come behind us, the way they've rallied behind the girls, the way they've supported them, loved them, and just showed them so much support and care. I think it's, it's made, it's what makes this place a really special place. The one high school town environment just creates such a beautiful atmosphere where these kids get to feel loved, supported, and cared about. So thank you guys so much for taking the time to recognize them and all their hard work.
Well, thank you very much. I think Hannah's going to get, I believe Hannah's going to get one more photograph, so if you, you, ladies will squeeze together as much as you can. Let's get a little, little soccer ball right there. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Parents, friends, family, thanks for being here. Thanks for all the work that you've done with your daughters. So, thank you very much. So Mayor Protem, you being a graduate of Capel High School, we need to have one of these every week.
I, as a, as an alum, I would love that. That would be fantastic.
All right. Item number seven on our list is our citizens' appearance. Citizens wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Records Act. We do have two people that have signed up to speak tonight, and the first one is Ms. Mercedes Hall. Please state your name and address for our record.
Mercedes Hall, and it's 483 Grace Lane, Capel, 75019. Thank you. And, oh, it's going. Hi, Mercedes Hall, and I'm a proud member of the K family, which is the Kiwanis International Family. My dad joined Kiwanis a year before I was born, and I grew up going to conferences, conventions, service projects, and it saved my life. It changed my life. I was in a Girl Scout, and then in junior high, not great times, but I had the K Club to look forward to. And I am ecstatic to stand here now in front of the City of Capel to announce that Kiwanis International was here two weeks ago, and we are chartering a brand-new Kiwanis Club here in Capel. And I've been elected the charter president, and I'm asking on the city's support of not just Kiwanis, but our sponsored leadership programs, which are our youth. So Kiwanis is, like Rotary, a service organization, but we are focused, Kiwanis is focused on serving the children of the world. And we are blessed that here in Capel, there's already a group of students at Capel High School that want to charter a K Club, which is Kiwanis Educates Youth, and which is also part of an international organization, the world's largest high school service organization. And ideally, we'll have the support of the city as well for sponsoring Builders Club in junior high, and even K kids in the elementary school. I did meet a teacher at Austin Elementary, so we could, we can start teaching service, leadership, and fellowship even at the elementary level, and to be able to impact our local community and the world. And there's even, Dallas College has a Capel campus, but there is Circle K in college. So I'm just very ecstatic. I know that April is Volunteer Month. I'm so grateful that this is a wonderful city that is supportive of volunteers, and wanted to announce this to the city council and to the city. And we have another member of our club that will speak in just a minute. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments tonight. Our next speaker is Diane Evans. Ms. Evans?
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address, please.
Diane Evans. Address is 777 Fairway Drive. Can you hear me? I need to...
Little closer.
Okay, how's this? 777 Fairway Drive, apartment 222 in Capel.
Thank you.
I'm a new member of the Kiwanis Club, and I wanted to invite everyone to the first meeting, but I, when I came in, I was joking with Mercedes. I said, there was all these lovely young girls here, and I said, this is our target audience here. We'd love to see some young people join. And I said, Mercedes, are you sure you didn't ask me here as a cautionary tale? Because I'm a pushing sixty crazy cat lady who basically works, I, I work by myself, and I've got two seventeen-year-old cats as my colleagues. So I said, you know, am I the cautionary tale here? Just to get out and be supportive of your community. I chose to join Kiwanis Club, even though I've never joined before. I wanted to impart some knowledge, skills, and abilities on the young people in this community. Also wanted to get out and meet the community, because you can only talk to two seventeen-year-old cats for so much. And I definitely wanted to meet who was here, learn some new ideas, and impart some new ideas. Definitely would like to invite people to come. We are having our first meeting this Thursday in Corporate Park at Triumph, 651 Canyon Drive, number 105 in Capel. We're meeting the second and fourth Thursdays of each month at 6 o'clock PM. Some of the topics of discussion will be fundraiser opportunities, what we can do to engage in fellowship with the youth, and what we can do to engage in fellowship with the community. That's it?
Thank you very much for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing what becomes of this effort, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are shown on the screens. Council, do you have any questions or desire to pull an item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Prim Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve and enclose the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, Prim Kamar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and consider the adoption of International Building Code 2024 Edition in Chapter 15 of the City of Capel Code of Ordinances, and ask Mr. Steve Schubert to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Steve Schubert, Chief Building Official for the City of Capel, and I am joined this evening by Tim Oats, the city's fire marshal, to recommend for the council's approval, the City of Capel Construction Chapter, and the 2024 edition of the International Code Council's collection of codes, as recommended by the Building and Standards Commission on April 3, 2025, and as proposed to council at the work session on April 8, 2025. I do have the presentation of 107 slides available if anyone wants to go through it. Otherwise, we're here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Councilmember Prim Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Schubert, for the benefit of people listening and watching in, and especially for someone like me that doesn't understand ordinances, explain to us the benefit to Capel residents by adopting these ordinance.
Well, as technology evolves, so do constructions and practices, also through practice and use, new data becomes available of, we used to do it this way, and it has caused these problems. So the codes are supposed to be the most mutually beneficial way of increasing the safety and the solidity of construction while also still trying to keep costs down to a reasonable level. Unfortunately, no matter what, construction costs will go up under all circumstances, but this is the International Code Council's way of trying to be as mutually equitable as possible.
Thank you, sir. And one of the benefits is it could potentially decrease the homeowner insurance. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Part, and parcel of the ISO, the insurance security officer, what they do is they come through and they'll audit the city, and they'll look at what current edition of the building codes that we are under, as well as like certifications of the people that are doing the jobs, and how stringent we are. And the better we score, the more likely it is that we will get some relief on the property insurance, not just for residential but for commercial properties as well.
Thank you, sir.
So follow, kind of following on with Councilmember Prim Kamar's line, a questioning, these building codes are not updated every year, so about how often are they updated?
Every three years. And that's been a practice all the way back through history. You go to the Southern Standard Codes back in the fifty, forties, fifties, sixties, and starting into the seventies. The City of Dallas Building Code, the Uniform Building Codes from YAPMO all the way through the eighties into the two thousands, where we started with the international codes, and the same for the National Electrical Code. It's on three-year cycles, which gives everybody an opportunity to look at new data, for boards to be formed, and be able to sit and confer, and identify what is going to be the best path for the next code cycle.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? We had no one sign up to speak for the public hearing, and we've heard Mr. Schubert's presentation with there being no other discussion. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. This time, I would close the public hearing and move for approval of item nine as stated.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Nevels. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, Prim Kamar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
See you in three years.
Thank you all very much.
Item number 10 is the city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from our work session. Mr. Lan?
Councilmember Carroll, I didn't even say anything to upset him, and he's leaving already, so, anyway. Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. Earth Fest is this coming Sunday, Saturday, from 11 to 1 PM at the Biodiversity Education Center. So this is a celebration of Capel's commitment to the environment that provides entertainment, education experience for all ages. High Lights, environmental, sustainable, and nature-themed projects and initiatives with the community. If you haven't been out to the back, I think it's someplace that you would really enjoy. Document Shredding, Keep Capel Beautiful, is hosting document shredding for Capel residents from 8 AM to noon on Saturday as well at the Capel Arts Center parking lot. Up to four boxes can be dropped off per person. All shredded paper will be recycled, and your container will be returned to you. The MacArthur Park Playground Community Input Meeting is coming up. It is going to be on Wednesday, April 30, at 6:30 PM at Mockingbird Elementary. Please come and share your ideas and help us ensure the space is inclusive, fun, and accessible for everyone. The Magnolia Park Trail, the contractor is completing the Gabion mattress. Fire Station 5, work is continuing on the interior. The Service Center is finishing up the plumbing, is related to the slab work. Dart continues to work on the punch list items for all the railroad crossings. Tech Stop Project at Beltline Bridge over I-635, the contractor is laying closures, complete to complete work on the existing bridge over I-635. And the Signal at Freeport and Northwestern is going to be arriving soon and will be installed by the end of May. So, Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number 11 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. The city manager covered most of mine, so I have one item. On Friday, May 2, from 7 to 9, join us in the Old Town for the Old Town Anniversary Celebration. Limelight will take the stage for an evening of great tunes and great times. Sing and dance with family and friends while the kiddos enjoy the Old Town Playground and splash around in the Main Street Interactive Fountain. Food trucks will feature Easy Slider and Nacho Loco and Marble Slab to satisfy your sweet tooth. Come on down and join the party. Item number 12 is the council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is the report on Farmers, Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD with Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start with Carrollton Farmers Branch. Graduation season is right around the corner. Early college high school students will walk the stage on May 16, the big day for Ranch View, Creek View, Newman Smith, and R.L. Turner students is May 24 at UNT. Details and live stream links can be found online at cfb.edu/students/graduation. And speaking of getting to the end of school, the last day for school is Thursday, May 22. Looking, let me see, CFB ISD registration is open. Families who register by May 9 will unlock exclusive FastPass benefits, including a special drawing to win cool prizes. Easily register online at cfb.edu/students/enrollment. Family with little ones are invited to tour campuses, meet staff, and receive onsite registration assistance at pre-K and kindergarten welcome nights. Check out the full schedule at cfb.edu/aboutus/news. CFB is excited to announce the Institute of Technology and Engineering at Barbara Bush Middle School and Ranch View High School. This new institute is designed to prepare students for future academic...